Who are we missing? Here comes Scott.
We're all here.
Here comes Terry. I think we're all here, right? All right. Let me get to the seven o'clock meeting. Good evening, I call to order the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 24th, and the time is 7:20. Could we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Present.
Here.
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 Here. And before we go any further, I'll tell the public out there, I did delay this meeting by 20 minutes because we had data that was coming in of our first meeting, and it was important for the board members to hear it, so my apologies that we are starting 20 minutes late. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, as a reminder, if you wish to address the board during public commentary, please make sure to fill out the public commentary forms located in the back of the room there, and pass that on to Jamie, our board secretary. Superintendent Shaw, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
There are none tonight, sir.
All right, as hearing none, can I get a motion?
I will then move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion passes. Ah, let's see. Superintendent Shaw, for your comments.
All right, I appreciate that, sir. So today, we met with our student board of delegates for the first time. This is always a great group of individuals, there's 27 members in our elementaries, that's fifth and sixth graders that come, and then all buildings are represented. This year, we're carrying on with the work that we did last year, and we're extremely thrilled for the, uh, this work with them, so they'll be coming in and doing presentations in our future board meetings, and just prepping all of you that each one does have a question of the board that you have to provide one, a single word answer to. There, I know, so we're prepping you guys out on that. We'll state this, though, that our board delegates this year is very interactive. It was a fun group to work with today. Andrew and Jackie helped to lead this group, and they did a Jenga game, and it was impressive because every single student was engaged, because there was a question they had to answer underneath each block, and oddly enough, it went all the way around with about 31 of us taking part, and the game didn't fall to the ground, which was kind of a shock there. But we're excited for that, our student board of delegates, and look forward to them coming to your future meetings. That's all I have for this session.
All right. That brings us to public commentary on board agenda items only, do we have any?
Not for agenda items.
Okay, that brings us down to...where does that bring us to?
Reports.
Oh, reports, are, on the, um, are there any discussions on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next is our consent agenda items. Are there any items that board members would like to have moved off the consent agenda item and moved over to new business?
Nope. Then hearing none, I will move to approve the consent agenda as presented, and the items to be approved as recommended.
Is there support? Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion passes. Do we have any new hires here tonight?
We do not.
We have none? All right, well, that, that's disappointing. Boy, I didn't read far enough ahead on that one. I believe that brings us to... Well, that brings us to our new business, correct? Yep, that would be new business items, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Shaw for a second reading and adoption of board policies.
Yep, so I appreciate that. So second reading and adoption of policy 0166, which is agenda. The board has, in the first reading, they'll be adding the words "removed" or "postponed" for the agendas, and so tonight, we are requesting a, this will be moved into a, voted on as a second reading, and so that way it'll be approved.
Is there a motion?
I will move to approve it into the second reading.
Support.
We have roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion passes. Back to Superintendent Shaw.
So, second reading, adoption of policy 2266, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, education, and programs or athletics, and all that was changed in here was through Neola recommendations of the adding of our two executive directors for elementary and secondary education with their ad, email, I'm sorry, with our email address for Title IX and phone number.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the policy.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So, with the injunction on new policy moving forth, this policy would remain in effect for cases after the date outlined in the beginning of it. I think mention needs to be made to that, otherwise, this policy would not be able to apply to those who are, have cases after July 31st. So, just some kind of motion, mention about the injunction, and until, and if the injunction is removed, then this policy would apply.
I asked the same question.
I appreciate, I, I would create, I appreciate the clarity. Honestly, I would actually strike out that language right there, since this is the holding language for our work at this time, because of the injunction, because this is our Title IX policy.
So, we had two policies that were put forward, you and I discussed this earlier. This policy was 2266, and it's only in effect, this, for anything before July 31st, 2024. And the other policy would have been for anything, I think it was 2264, if I'm correct, would have been for anything after that, because of the changes. Once the injunction was put in place, neither one of these then become applicable, and they remain the same.
No, all ones still stays intact, and that's what...
Why do we need a motion, then?
So, well, if you're struggling with this, that language right there with August 1st, that was my point, that when we talked with Jeremy about this, is that, that this policy was going to actually stay in our policy book for years to come, because until we got all kids graduated, that would have been a part of our system prior to this date. So, if, I guess what I'm sharing is that this is our Title IX policy, it's in effect right there, and so, when it comes to, we've got to have one, and so you have...
But there were other changes made prior to this that applied to the changes that are being indicated in the new Supreme Court ruling, because they're being underconsidered, which is why we can't move forward with stuff, because it's being considered, because some of that language is included in this policy.
The only changes we made...
The only changes we're making right now, yes, but the changes that were made already implemented into this policy were in basis on...
When would that have been, ma'am?
What's the date of the revision before this one, 2022?
Okay, but that's our, that's the point, that this is our Title IX policy, it's been in place for years. The other policy that they brought forward had to do with the changes that happened with OCR, and so that's why it was being recommended back in July, but then when the injunction happened at, through the court, we stopped that policy from being brought forward, because until it's all handled at the court, there's no reason for that. So, this policy was all, was about just keeping, keeping, changing these two names right here, rather than the executive director of Human Resources.
I'm totally not following this, based on our conversation we had earlier, because this doesn't even make sense, then.
So, when you asked that question, I was, I went, clarity was brought forward by the highlighted section right there when, a few moments ago, and now when, I understand what the question was, that we should have caught that a month ago, right here, that this would have been struck out, and not there, because we had already taken...
It was the fact that when these two policies went put up, they were put up simultaneously, side by side.
We didn't, we had to...
There was 2264, I, I actually, actually had that on there.
Neola put the two forth, because some schools still have to abide by the new policy. We are under the injunction, actually, the college was just added to the injunction as well, about two weeks ago.
And that's why we pulled, I think it was a month ago that we pulled that other policy, it was brand new, and said we don't need to deal, do anything with it because of the injunction, maybe even six weeks ago.
May I make a, a motion to add to, and a friendly amendment to the previous motion, which would be to strike the first piece in yellow above the introduction, and then put it forth with just the changes of the two Title IX coordinator names.
I would support that.
So everybody knows what we're voting on, correct? Okay, can we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes.
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 Yes, and the motion carries. Superintendent Shaw?
So, our next policy is a second reading, adoption of policy 2414, reproductive health and family planning, and, as just to recap, the following recommendation was made by Neola, the legislature repealed the portions of the School Aid Act requiring disciplinary, disciplinary policy for providing abortion assistance, and that provide, proved, provide additional limitations on instruction in reproductive health. So these, last month, the board, the last board meeting, the board approved the policy with just the Neola changes.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the policy as presented.
Support?
Support. Oh, sorry.
Discussion?
So this was the one we did option A and option B on?
Correct.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes, and the motion carries. Superintendent Shaw?
All right. And a second reading and adoption of policy 6320, purchasing. Board members request a revision of the, to this policy update recommended by Neola, paragraph one, and four, and under item B, it adds the word services, and so Neola also put forth other statutory changes in here, and just some punctuation changes, so the biggest change would be adding the word services to this policy.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the policy 6320, purchasing, with the additional language as indicated by Superintendent Shaw.
Is there support?
Support.
Is there any discussion?
And this includes services, which was not added by Neola.
No, no, this one does have services in it.
Yes, but Neola didn't add the services, we did.
Correct.
Okay.
So, with that contact point, following our board meeting, I did have conversations with other people, and from those conversations, I've learned that there are broader implications with adding that term "services" to the policy, and I just have concerns for how adding services might hinder our administrative team and others in the district from getting what they need to get in a timely fashion. And I understand that there's a clause for emergencies and things, but I'm just thinking in a broader context, if we are now requiring that bid service, or that bid process for services, because as you pointed out, that the majority of what we do in this district is based on services, I'm very concerned for what that looks like considering so many people are now going to have to do that bidding process. It was just something that, before, I didn't understand the scope of that until I had these conversations. So, I understand that before that, I was operating through the conversations I was having at this table, but I just feel that I was presented through those conversations more information about how that could impact instruction, how that could impact facilities, how that could impact operations, how that could impact transportation, and that was just a concern that I wanted to share.
So Mary, you're concerned that it's going to add more work for these folks?
It's going to add more work for the folks, but I'm also worried about the timeline. The timeline that these people, like Darla was mentioning earlier, how she doesn't understand how teachers are able to accomplish everything that they need to accomplish, so I'm thinking about how, as an example, our band director often has to work with vendors for services for, fill in the blank, use your imagination. If we are now asking of that instructor to then go out and fulfill these bid services, that's another thing on this person's shoulders. It's just an example, I'm not saying that this is a reality, I'm just using it as a hypothetical. So, it's just a consideration, and it was something that I was thinking we may want to consider before casting votes on this policy.
So Mary, I was thinking about this as well, I keep going back and forth, and admittedly, I was the one who, I think, started the motion on this to pass it in the, in the previous meeting. So I, I should have asked an important question of our superintendent, and I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit right now. In the, since you've been here, how many times would you say that things have been done where services have been purchased that we would not have seen, obviously, that this would now change and would require a stoppage of that purchase until it came before the board?
Oh my gosh, I can't...
Sorry, I told you I was going to put you on the spot.
Right, to put, to put a number of the, when we think about the, just over 14,000, we're bringing in front of the board there, of the number of items that we've purchased of a service, I can't even begin to guess, I mean, 40, 50 things a year?
At least, and I mean, it can be anything from, like, for example, the services that we have at graduation ceremonies, the Jumbotron, the staff running the AV, all of that, that would then have to come before the board, and they can't, like, if it, if there isn't a meeting in a certain timeframe, they may get booked up, and then we don't have that. So like, that could be something, just as a...
Cassie, I appreciate the example, and that actually changes my thinking on this, and I'm going to, again, offer a friendly amendment, that this be passed without the word "services."
The reason I think services in there again is because that is our major bulk. I mean, if there's a Jumbotron, I mean, I kind of think we're going to have a graduation at the end of the year. I kind of think we're going to need a Jumbotron, okay? And I mean, it's not that it's going to be unexpected, I mean, the purpose of this policy is to save money for the school, for the taxpayers, so that we can take that money and give it to the children for their education. I don't really think it's going to be burdensome for anybody, because let's say, for example, I mean, I got to believe, for example, in, let's say, maintenance people, they probably bid on everything, I mean, they probably bring all this stuff here, and again, if it's nominal stuff, it's $5,000, again, we're not going to hear about it. Cass is going to tell us about it, it's going to be in the board thing, and that's going to be it.
I just heard a number of 40, an example of a Jumbotron. I don't want to spend my time here necessarily micromanaging a Jumbotron, and 40 is several items added to the agenda each time we meet, which is also paperwork on the people doing it, or things like that. I don't know, my mind's not on it, but that's how I talk on teams and everywhere else as well.
Well, then we could let the motion go through, if it fails, then you could, there could be another motion made.
So, so I think we need to, to follow protocol here. The first reading has already been done, this is the second reading, you can't make an amendment on a second reading policy, you either vote it up or you vote it down.
We just did in the last one.
Yeah, I'm going to say we just did in the last one.
We did what?
We made an amendment to it.
And then we approved it.
Then we approved it.
So two wrongs make a right at this point?
No, I mean, you can't, I think Darla's got a point, I mean, except for a second reading, it either passes or it doesn't pass.
And what do we do if it doesn't pass?
So this is a whole different thing, this is a, this is an actual change to a policy that was voted on as a first reading, that we never do. And so it got voted on as a first reading, and it was put forth to a second reading, and the motion is to adopt. The other policy that we just did was a language pullout, it wasn't changing the language of the policy, it was just pulling out a segment that had dates on it. So in this, in this category...
We'll go ahead and vote on it, and then we won't have a policy, or we'll have a policy.
Okay, I would like to put my comments on the policy, I was just, I was just clarifying the points of where we, where we were. So, I don't know what conversations happened outside, I wasn't privy to any of those outside of the meeting that led to changes on this.
I'm not sure any conversation happened, I think people just thought...
Mary said she had many conversations with people.
I was sharing what I have learned. I was sharing my perspective. I wasn't sharing that I had all of these discussions, and now you need to take them a certain way. I was just sharing that I have learned something, and that my perspective has changed.
Okay. The other thing is, when we reference this, we are looking at anything over 25,000, so any of those items that we may have referenced probably fall under that category, but that being said, we just, we just approved a service of almost $400,000, and that was a service. And I think when we're looking at services that can run into 400, almost $400,000, I think we need to be considering that as, looking at other options that there are that may be more affordable, as Larry said, for fiscal responsibility. And so when we leave services out of it, we are also leaving out those categories. I don't believe that everything should be at last minute, we only know about it now, I believe as a system, we just had an audit that said everything functions great. We have a system that operates and runs, so in order to say that we don't have the time to be fiscally responsible, and we don't have the time...
Nobody said that, nobody said that.
Larry, when, when...
Darla, nobody said that we're not physically responsible, period.
Okay, if we did not have $400,000 under services to be looked at, there are people that could say, how, how do you know you couldn't have got that for 200,000? And I say, I don't know that I could have got that for 200,000, I was given one option.
So you're telling me the people that you have in place, you don't trust?
Okay, you always bring up trust, this has nothing to do with trust, this has to do with me sitting here, giving you where we're at with this policy, and one real example of why I believe services need to be in there, based on a purchase that just happened and got approved. So it was almost $400,000 for the service, and then it was almost $100,000 for additional equipment needed to support those services. So, if you tally it all up, that's almost $500,000. So I think that to put something forward and say "services," and say, hey, we need to take a look at these kind of purchases, I think is a very real thing.
Okay.
And I, I mean, I can't believe a Jumbotron is over 25,000, is it?
It, it's not just the Jumbotron, it's their staff there, the generator to run it, all the techs, all the sound things, them coming and testing it, them having the screens, having...
So you can't put a proposal up?
Probably three or four, or more of their staff there, running the whole feed and event. It, it's not just the Jumbotron, and if I may clarify what you indicated just a second ago, the policy indicates 50% of the state bid threshold, that is not, the bid threshold is at 25,000 and some, so that means the 14,000 some odd would come before the board. So I think it's going to affect, I think it's going to be more than 40, depending on what's going on.
But that's what we're here for, I mean, that's what we're here for, to oversee and, and take a look at these things, I mean, that's, that's why we all sit here, and to say that we don't, you know, I don't want anybody to think that I'm not willing to invest my time to ensure that we're meeting the, you know, the responsibility to say, yeah, we looked at everything. And I always say, my vote, I have to be able to explain why I made my vote, you know, and if I don't approve something, I have to be able to explain why. We're in a situation that this policy was already approved as a first reading, it is now up for a second reading.
Well, I'll see what happens.
And the problem is that we've...
We already approved, yes.
Last meeting.
Yes.
Now, if we don't approve something, I mean, we've already denied the first one without services.
Right.
We're not going to have a purchasing policy, I mean, you know, there's not going to, I mean...
There'd be no policy.
There'd be no policy.
Because the first one was voted on as a no, this one was voted on as a yes, so if a policy's already been voted on as no, and one is put up a yes, and you discount the one that's a yes, you have no policy. So everybody understands that's where we'll be, with no policy whatsoever.
What do you got, Jamie?
No.
So, what did that one, because if I'm understanding correctly, Neola is on the changes to our current policy?
Yes.
Okay. If you guys opted to add the services to the first reading last week, so our current policy will still stay?
It got voted on and declined. That current policy was voted on as option A or B, it's the whole policy, when you put a policy up, it's the whole policy. No, it's the whole, we had this conversation before about if we're voting on something, are we voting on the policy, or are we voting on the, only the changes? And I clarified that a while ago, because I always want to make sure it, where I'm at with it, because there's some policies I wouldn't have approved the first time around. And so we had that conversation, and the conversation was, it's the entire policy. So the entire policy was put up on purchasing, and it was put up two ways, one with services and one without, the only one that approved is one with services. Therefore, that is the only policy that we have, on a motion, the other option of the policy was voted down.
I agree. I mean, if there's a problem with, just put it on consent agenda, we don't have to vote 40 times like Scott's, I mean, put in consent agenda, and like everything else, I mean, like a minute, you know, we don't go through every minute that we have and prove it, just put in the consent agenda like we do everything else.
Like we used to do.
That's what we do in the other organizations, I mean, we put in consent agenda, and unless somebody wants a poll, and you think it's approved.
May I also make a, make a statement? That the audit review that we had during our work session earlier today was all under financial responsibility under a policy that did not have services in it. So we were fiscally responsible to glowing review from our auditors without having services in that policy.
That's not the fiscal responsibility I was referring to, I was referring to when you have option, and you say, okay, this is the service we want to use, and you're given one option, you vote on the option, either yes or no. What this policy would allow for, as it does with purchasing, it would allow for... What this policy would allow for, as it does with purchasing, it would allow for multiple options to be put forward, and then the board decides which one to approve. And most of the time, the administration makes that decision anyway, but we can see the other options that were available at the time. And so, fiscal responsibility wasn't in the overall operations of the business. It was in a board decision.
Jamie, roll call.
Mrs. Vincent.
Larry, we're voting on this as it's...
We're voting just as it stands.
As it's written.
Thank you.
With services included, I am voting no.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Dr. Barron.
I wanna clarify why I'm saying no. I think we go down this road of getting policies that are recommended from a team of lawyers in the state, or statewide implementation, and we really start doing this too often, where we reevaluate everything that they've done and the work, and I'm going to say no.
Mr. Hatt.
Let me clarify as well. I'm gonna vote no, but what I'd like to potentially do is have a discussion with Cassie, maybe as a group later, is can we protect the process on services with some type of internal procedure?
That makes sense.
If it exceeds a certain amount, that internal procedure would say we have to get multiple bids. But that way, we can have a little bit of flexibility. So, I will say no, but I'd certainly like to see that happen.
Do we have that in place by any chance? Okay.
So, since we're having discussion during vote, the, we are very, very specific that there is a difference between policy and procedure. And we are told over and over again that policy is boardwork, and procedure is an administrative. So, what we would be suggesting is we are going to not only violate the way we do policies right now, but then we would be violating our standard that we've always set, that procedure is handled by the administration. So, once we start getting into weeds, we start getting into more of the weeds, and we will have no purchasing policy, and anything that goes forward, we will have no purchase policy. My vote is yes for the policy to approve.
Mrs. Van Woshenova.
I will also, I'm gonna vote yes, and the reason I, we need some kind of a purchasing policy, guys. You gotta have something. We already denied, last meeting, okay, we determined whether or not we're gonna stick with the language as presented, without the word "service," or we're gonna add "services." There was a vote, very unusual. We normally do not have votes on first readings. The vote that we was going to put for the second reading, and second readings are normally just something that's, once a decision is made, we go ahead. If there's no comment from the public, then we approve it. So, we indicated at that time that we want the service in there. We rejected the other one. So, we'll have no policy. So, I think we need some policy, and I'm gonna vote yes.
I disagree that we won't have a policy. This clearly says that it's a revision to the policy.
And we, and yes, and there was two revisions, Scott. The first one was existing.
We have not revised it.
The first, well, it was, it's rejected. The first one was rejected.
Which was the existing policy. Yes, we did.
The existing policy was rejected.
It was rejected, because it didn't get approved.
That's why we didn't wanna vote on it last time, because of, normally, we do not have vote on the first, and I think that was Darla's point, we don't have votes on the first reading, and that was the reason why.
Right.
But now...
Because now, we run into a situation where we've already voted on a policy, decided that it was gonna be in there. Now, we come to the second reading, and everybody's like, "Oh, we're all gonna change our minds now." And that's not, again, it's not the way the process has been done from, since I've been here. It's always been, the second reading was for public to be able to put their input in. The board had already put forth those policies, which were decided typically in a work session. And I made the reiteration at the last meeting, that's typically done at a work session. It was not done at the work session. So, we set aside protocol for one meeting in order to do that. And so, then, we did it, and now, we're gonna undo that. So, when we start keeping undoing the processes, therein lies no structured process.
Seems that happens a lot here. It just depends on whose side you're on. Jamie, go ahead with the vote.
Larry, what is your point with that?
I vote no for the same reason Scott did, and the motion fails.
So, we have no purchasing policy?
We still have a purchasing policy.
We do not have...
Do not.
So, might I recommend to the board, then, at that point, that to have someone make a recommendation for a first reading of the purchasing policy as it was, or the original one, without any changes, without even any recommendations from Neola on those, the changes they made, and then, at least that way, you'd be going through a first reading, and/or someone make a motion to bring this back in front of the board at our next board meeting.
That's what you can't do. I mean, like I said before, and that's what I was so adamant about before, when we, if you don't get something, you would come back, it's like a little kid, you know? If you don't get something, you come back again, and again, and again, until you get it.
Okay, then we don't have a purchasing policy.
Maybe your parents will do it, or you go to the mom, and she says, "No," you go to dad. "Hey, guys, you vote once. If you don't like it, tough. That's the decision of the board, and we live with it." Okay? We don't have a purchasing policy, we'll just live with it.
Okay.
That's our decision.
That's our decision.
Well, that's...
It sounds like one person's decision.
It does.
Not my decision. I voted for the policy.
I'll contact our school attorney and get clarification on what just occurred for us.
Thank you.
So, I would like to put on a work session the address of the back-and-forth changes to our policies and protocols in running meetings.
Yeah, I think we can't do that. I mean, if we're gonna have a first reading, I think we're gonna have to stick with how we used to do it then. If we're gonna vote on it, okay, we're voting on options.
That was only a one-time thing. That was, we actually set aside bylaws in order to do that one time, and we did it one time, and now, we're in the situation we're in.
That's right.
So, it's already been voted on.
Yeah.
Looking back at the policy, so the A version of policy 6320 that was presented at our previous board meeting, it wasn't the original policy that was as it stands that our district had in place. There were changes that Neola provided. There were strike-throughs, there was additional, like additional wording, changes, things of that nature. So, there were going to be edits to the policy, and from my perspective, that is what we voted down. Those edits and changes are what we voted down. We said, "No, we're not accepting those changes that Neola provided to us." And at that meeting, we went with option B, which included the services verbiage. So, to my interpretation of this situation, we're still operating under the existing policy that we never touched, because our original policy...
Can't do this.
Under that theory, then, anytime we change, let's say, we did put the word "services" in there, then we have two policies, one, the existing one, and one, the one with services. I mean, that would be not a logical decision.
Well, right now, we voted down your amendment, essentially. We voted down the version that headed the wording that you wanted to change.
No, the board wanted to change, 'cause the board voted to make that change. It wasn't one person. It was the board voted to make that change. And once the board voted to make that change, that change is what the board must stand on. And then, we bring it up to another motion and say, "Well, we want to do it again." And I think this do-over, is that needs, "Let's do it again," lies these problems where we go, "Okay, we're just gonna ask someone, and we'll just do whatever they say."
I disagree. First, it says clearly that it's revisioned. So, what we voted down was making a revision. But the purpose of bringing something forth to the board is to have a democratic process where we decide whether or not we're adopting something or not. It's not, the idea is not that we brought something to the board to guarantee its approval, and that everybody would agree and buy in. That's the purpose of having a board, is, that's why we take votes. Otherwise, we wouldn't take votes if it wasn't a democratic process with an expectation that people got to weigh in, which is what the discussion is for, and then cast their judgment on whether or not they support something or not. And in this case, we decided we did not support something.
Now, that would be true had we not taken a vote last meeting.
Right. I agree.
That's where it screws us up.
Yes. Had we not voted on the first reading...
That vote wasn't to approve it.
You're right.
That vote wasn't to approve it. That vote was to decide which one we wanted to bring forth for consideration.
Right.
And ignorance is not bliss. So, if we, on the outside of our board meetings, go and research more, and we talk to people, and we talk to other board members of other school districts, and find out how they're handling this type of situation, and we learn, which is really the reason why we're here, is to continue the learning process, if we learn something doesn't seem right, then we can say no.
But I also think, we knew these policies were coming up. We have discussed these policies at length, including this policy. So, yes, there's an opportunity for research, and the research should have came on what we wanted this policy to look like. So, here, I'll give you an example. So, we voted a policy, a 166. And I decide, "Well, gosh, I don't like the way that policy's written. I want a new motion." And so, I want my new motion to read something else, so therefore, I'm going to change that and wanna put another motion up on that policy, because I've now become educated on some of those policy points within there, and now, I wanna put up a new one. I mean, when does it stop? Because it can continue to go on and on, and my point is, it shouldn't happen for nobody, not just one individual. It shouldn't happen at all, because we're playing with protocol, we're playing with procedure, and we're changing motions, and we're changing stuff that had already been voted on. Because if we keep changing votes on what we vote on, then it's perpetual line that's constantly being put forth.
I think that we can perpetually change, and change, and change, and change. The idea is that we keep working together until we get something that's right, and maybe what's right today doesn't work tomorrow. So, even if we approve something today, we could bring it back to the board in a week and say, "Hey, it's not working." And I would hope that we would if it wasn't working, and vote on it again. I don't think that that's a bad process. It's messy. What we're doing is messy.
There's gotta be some finality. I mean, you know, we can't, you know, we can't relitigate things over and over and over.
Oh, Congress does it all the time.
Well, I know that, but we don't wanna be like Congress.
We never did that up until recently. Up until recently, we never did that. That was not a practice.
You know, we make a decision, we stick by it, we live by it. I mean, I might not like something, okay? Maybe I don't like something that Scott brings up. "Hey, that's tough. I lost, I lost." But that's life.
Right.
But, you know, we live by it.
Had to live by that.
We work as a group. I mean, if we vote on something, and that's what we say we want, then we live by it.
Tom, you got something else? Then we're gonna move on.
I do think, and I'll look through Robert's rules, we can't revote on something we've already turned down, but per kind of what Scott said, we can introduce a new proposal for this purchasing...
Absolutely.
...that is different than what we've already voted down. We can do that.
Right. Until then, we have no policy.
Until then, we have no policy.
Right.
We'll have to go through first and second reading.
That's my point. Now, we gotta start from scratch. We gotta put together a policy. We gotta go through all the process. We gotta go through a first reading. We gotta go through a second reading. And in the meantime, we have no purchase policy.
So, we need to do that quick.
You're right.
And it can't be something we've already made a decision on, so. Can't be option A.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
Or option B.
Now, it has to be an entirely new policy.
Yeah.
Gee, now, that's a lot of work.
All right.
Delegate Assembly, discussion only, Superintendent Shaw.
Standing straight to the left of me, to Mary.
Da-da-da-da-da-da. So, in October, thank you very much, Board colleagues, for voting for me to be your representative at the Delegate Assembly for M A S B. This is the second year that you voted me for that. Thank you very much. So, I'm also on the Resolutions and Bylaws Committee, which runs the Delegate Assembly. So, not only will I have information for you about the coming resolutions and bylaws for M A S B for your consideration, which I will send to our president, as well as Jamie, so they can get those to you, so you can read them before our October the 22nd board work session, because we need to discuss them at our October the 22nd board work session. That, I'm also on the cover this year. So, that's gonna be fun. Anyway, so, the Resolutions and Bylaws Committee is basically the guiding tenants for M A S B and how they serve us, and how M A S B serves school districts across the state of Michigan, and what we want M A S B's vision to be. So, as that paperwork, as soon as it comes to me, I will make sure it gets into your hands. Please read through it. There is typically a section at the beginning that's basically like, "These are the new things that are being proposed," which we, as a board, can also take items to be proposed at the Delegate Assembly. I am happy to do that on our behalf. So, if you feel that something is missing, please write something, and I can present that to everybody. Then, there is a section for, like, amended proposals, and then, there are going to be things in the very back that are basically obsolete, and they're going to be voted to be removed. So, I will get you that information as soon as possible. And then, at our October the 22nd board work session, we will have time to kind of walk through that together, and I can answer any questions. And then, just like last year, the Delegate Assembly will be livestreamed, so you're gonna be able to, like, view that way, which will be fun. And then, I think that's everything that I needed to say.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right. That goes to District Security Refresh, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, President Zerman. We are asking the board to approve the following security hardware and installation for a cost not to exceed $159,304 from Red Letter Productions. Fund for this purchase will come from our district security budget. And I have Mr. Beard from ACAP, and Mr. Hauser, our network administrator, if you have any questions. And this would be for our Custer Complex security camera replacement.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
We don't have a purchasing policy.
Yeah, we don't have a purchasing policy.
So, I guess you can buy whatever you want, Dave.
Buy what you want.
Approved.
The check's sealed.
There you go. I guess that's the way they're gonna run this, sure. Now, can I get a motion?
It's not the way we're running it. The point is, it's Larry. It's part of the purchasing policy.
The point is, we're gonna find out, and I'll almost guarantee you, we revise back to the policy we had before that. Can I get a motion?
I'm sure it's...
Yeah, I move to approve the purchasing of hardware and installation, and the cost of $159,304 from Red Letter Productions, as per David's description.
Okay. Anybody have any discussion or questions?
So, when were these cameras last? These cameras that are currently in? Aren't there cameras currently there now?
There's cameras currently there, roughly, I wanna say, nine years old, so they're pretty old.
Nine years old, yeah. And they were the first ones that were put in?
At that building, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Jamie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Barron.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachenova.
Let me explain my no vote. I don't think we have a policy, I don't think he needs approval. As a matter of fact, Tom just indicated we have no purchasing policy this time. So, I don't care if he gets it, but I'm voting no, because I don't think we have the authority to tell him what to do.
Yeah, based on that, I'd like to change my vote to no.
I don't think we do.
Based on that, I'd like to change my vote to no, because you are correct. Without a purchasing policy, there is no motion necessary in order to purchase anything at this point.
Okay. Jamie?
No, I'm asking.
No, you're telling us.
What do you mean, I'm telling you? I told you, you couldn't have done it to begin with, and you didn't listen to me.
We're almost 95% positive we revised back.
Who's we?
Myself and Scott sitting right there, and I believe Mary chimed in on that one. But, if you'll give it just a few minutes, we actually sent that question to Jeremy. We're waiting for a response.
Well, thank you for the friendly commentary, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That takes us to transportation security purchase, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. We're asking the Board to approve the following security hardware and installation from our, for our 20 remaining buses, for $166,880 from Red Letter Productions. Fund for this purchase will come from our 31 AA grant, and our general fund split equally.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the following security hardware installation for the 20 buses at a cost of $166,880 from Red Letter Productions, from the 31 AA grant, and the general fund split equally, as Mr. Payne described.
Is there support?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
How many bids did you get on this?
I believe three on this.
Three, all right.
Three, let me clarify, three for the hardware, and only one responded for the installation.
All right, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Hett.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Based on the fact that we're not following protocol on stuff, I see no reason not to give you what you asked for. So about, yeah.
Again, let me explain my vote. I think we have no jurisdiction to either approve or deny his motion. If he wants it, I think he can have it. But from a perspective of a board member, I think I will vote no, just to indicate that I have a jurisdictional problem with that.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to old business, which we have none, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for the second round of Superintendent comments.
All right, I have two items. First is, tomorrow is a two-hour late start arrival, and teachers will be doing professional development during that time. Kids Club is still running normal hours, it opens at 6:30. Count day is next Wednesday, the 2nd. And so, we're looking forward to that day, and there were students that we have here. We do have a couple of, and we have an attendance incentive for that day that we'll be sharing later on this week, and you'll get notification of that there from one of our community partners, so we're excited for that opportunity there, too. So, that's my comments for tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Darla, do we have any public commentary on any items tonight?
Yes, we do. I'm just going to remind everybody, the public comment is for three minutes. I will give you a countdown at 1 minute and 30 seconds, and I will give the start when you're ready. First up, we'll go with Katie Bath-Davis.
Hi, everyone, Katie Bath-Davis, alum at Monroe Public Schools, and my daughter and my son currently attend Custer Elementary. My daughter Nina is here right there. I'm here today for a number of reasons. One of them is, kind of encompasses everything altogether. I came here a couple of years ago to ask the folks to change the name of Custer Elementary, because Colonel Custer really doesn't represent what Monroe students stand for. Custer was a colonizer, responsible for some genocide, and a terrible student as well. The reason why is because he's such a violent figure for so many people. And right now, the world that we're living in right now, I think we all know that there is just an uptick in the violence, in the rhetoric. And it's been this way for quite a few years, but, I mean, with these school threats, these, you want to call them hocuses, whatever they are, this is scaring a lot of people, okay? The communication and transparency. I know we have an alert system, I know we have to do investigations, but when somebody can receive a message and share it online, and that gets shared about 30 times before we hear anything from our school administration, to me, that's just not good enough. These times are different, anything can happen. I'm worried about the state of our county right now. We currently have, the Chair of our County Commissioners is serving an 18-month sentence for federal charges. The Vice Chair of the County Commission was just in the news recently for being a lobbyist for marijuana. And these signs that are around town about the community college with the bathrooms, the Monroe County Republican Party is responsible for these signs. And if so happened, the Secretary of the Monroe County Republican Party is also on the school board, and there's a cheerleading coach that's been able to be in a relationship with a minor for over a year, and three investigations done, and the school board has not done anything about it. But there's a treasurer that goes out to the community college and can poke his head around the bathrooms. Well, there's real stuff going on here at Monroe High School and Monroe Public Schools. I'm really asking for some changes, some transparency, and some sort of unifying thing that can bring this community together with all of the rhetoric and just really scary stuff that's going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to reset my timer here. Okay, next up is, I'm just going to, Jerry Ole with, I'm pretty confident you know how this goes.
I believe I do. Good evening.
If this guy don't know, we're in trouble.
Nice to see all of you here this evening. I have two children that attend Monroe Public Schools, and I'm also a candidate for the school board. My purpose here tonight is just to advocate for Waterloo School, and there are 250 kids that were shuffled to other schools. I truly believe that, you know, it's all about kids here, and our kids need a homeschool. We've lost a lot of students in this district over the years. And I listened to the last video of your meetings and heard all the comments that were being said. But, one thing we can't afford is kids just walking out here. And one of the reasons why lots of children and families leave this school district is because they want small class sizes. And I would respectfully submit to you to do your data and do your research hard and thoroughly, because moving more kids into another building didn't reduce that. You may have taken some plain classrooms that weren't being used, but as it was said previous, that those classrooms were other teachers now who are on carts. And carts were put out there when I was a kid in school. And by the way, I was a student at Waterloo, and I know how important Waterloo School was to me, from a school district where I came from, a different school. And it was that school that really helped change my life and got me in the right direction. So I hope that you support your superintendent and push to really put what's important for kids, in this case, in this situation, because all of you, as elected officials, hold one, one most important position, and that's to do what's right for children. And that's what I hope that you consider doing out of all your discussions, and out of all your research, out of all your investigations. Look at it, what's best for kids, and that's what I ask for. I also will talk just quickly about the bond issue, because this board, not all of you, not some of you, but the Board of Education went out and asked for a bond to do $59 million worth of upgrades, okay? Some of that's got backed up, many reasons why. I'm not going to sit here and argue about, was it good or bad to do some of this construction, and what caused some of the delays. But naturally, we know delays occurred, pandemic was involved, and many other variables. But I would say this, that you owe to the voters to do the right thing, and you submitted to the State Treasurer's Office an itinerary that directly indicated and dictated what you would do with that tax money. This is a taxpayer's money now, so I would ask that you do the right thing in that situation, too, and do the changes, and do the safety upgrades that the taxpayers gave you the opportunity to do. We haven't had a bond passed in this district for years. And when this bond got passed overwhelmingly, what it said is, safeties first, put your personal agendas aside, and do what's right for kids, and do what's right to protect them today, and protect them tomorrow, because that's what it's all about. Do what the taxpayer said you should be doing. I think if you do the right thing, people will recognize that. And safety is first and paramount. That building deserves to have a safety entry, just like all the other schools do. And to postpone those situations, basically delayed the people's responsibility that they put into you to do the right thing. So please consider that as we move forward. And this might sound very emotional to me, but I have a lot of sake in this, because I'm a parent here as well.
I'm sorry, your time has expired, Jerry, please, thank you. I'm just trying to be fair to everybody. Final is Stephen Meyer.
Hi, yeah, my name is Stephen Meyer, I live in City Monroe, and I recently emailed the Superintendent about an issue where I had seen campaign signs around Monroe for two people that are running that used to be employed by Monroe Public Schools that are using, they stole the logo off of the high school, the Trojan logo, to use on their campaign sign. And so I looked up the school policy, and they say, that is, you can't do that unless you get approval by the Superintendent. And so I emailed the Superintendent about it to see if there's some action that could be taken. And I wasn't satisfied that action can quickly be taken, and so now I'm bringing it to the Board, because I hope that the Board, as elected officials who are also holding the policies of Monroe's school in interest, can see the urgency in trying to maybe act fast. I was informed that currently the Athletic Director is the one trying to handle enforcement for protecting assets of the district. And in my opinion, I think that's more the job of an attorney, because I don't think the Athletic Director has any legal experience. And so if there are any attorneys that are working for the school board, I would hope that somebody could bring that to their attention, so they can enforce any infringements on stealing assets of the district for the purpose of winning a political campaign. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to comment?
Yes, I can take care of that question right there. So the clarity that I try, I appreciate him bringing that point forward, was that, because we had Chet in here, I think it was in July, and had to do with the trademarking, and that was what, he's actually helping us do, is get our logo trademarked. As far as the Trojan head that is on those signs, to say that they took it straight from our website or our stuff, we don't have, our Trojan head is not trademarked. We don't have anything specific about our Trojan head. So when you begin to think about, I haven't talked to the gentleman, but where'd they get it?
It's clear, what can I say?
Oh, sure. But, but, but my, but my point is, though, is that it isn't clear, because you can go onto the website and find this. And that's my point, is that when we begin the path of working on our trademarking, and is just that, can we make it distinct to Monroe Public Schools? And at that point in time, when we are at that stage where it has, we've had counsel to help get it passed, so we can do that, which is through the federal government, then we can protect that trademark. But right now, we don't have a trademark.
What's the policy say? I'm assuming you looked it up.
Yeah, so it has in there about.
The policy says that elected officials cannot use what?
It doesn't, no.
I'm just trying to catch, I'm sure you looked it up.
Yeah, it says, use of logos is not permitted unless approved by the Superintendent.
So we're not considering this a logo?
My question becomes, is again, I ask each of you, if you were to go onto our website or wherever, you can find, I mean, the only thing that I would say that is distinct to us is what you see right back there on our TV. That is extremely distinct, okay?
That is our brand.
We don't. But that is, when you begin, okay, when you go to a Trojan head, that's what's on their sign? A Trojan head, you can find those all over the place. So how can you, that was my point, is how can I go to them and say, well, you took that from us? No, we didn't.
So, I'm just trying to clarify the process here. So, nobody came to you asking for permission to utilize anything that is on a campaign sign? Is that what?
Of course not.
Okay. That's what I'm just, I'm just asking, because that sounded like what it was.
One more thought, have any attorneys looked at this?
We haven't sent it off to our district attorney on this matter.
Could you please?
I'll post a question to him.
Thank you.
In the picture.
Any more public commentary?
No, that is all.
That brings us to Board Member Commentary.
You want to go, who wants to go first? Go ahead, Mary.
So, earlier this evening at our Board Work Session, there was a really in-depth presentation about our student academics and the data surrounding that. And there was some conversation about the student data that was presented, and our graduation rates, and not seeing the bridge between those two things. And so I was thinking about that, and, so the context that I'd like to bring is that, and for those that don't know, I was a teacher for 16 years, and I taught almost 10 of those years in Monroe Public Schools. Fulfilling graduation requirements, yes, testing is a component of that. But in order for a student to fulfill graduation requirements, it's not solely test data that checks that box. So students demonstrate their proficiency for educational learning objectives in a variety of ways. They can do that through performance, they can do that through projects, they can do that through their thesis, they can do that through presentations. Some courses require portfolios that demonstrate their learning throughout the course. So, when it comes to the data that was presented to us earlier, seeing that proficiency, the percentage of students that are deemed proficient on standardized tests through the state, as well as our common assessments around the district. And then, thinking about the larger picture of our graduation rates, it's like looking at the apple seed and like the apple, right? The apple seed is that assessment data, and it's just one component of the larger things that compile what graduation requirements are. So that's just something I wanted to kind of put forth as I was kind of thinking of visualizations and analogies that I could kind of present. But we didn't have time during our data presentation for me to kind of share that comment.
Who's up next?
I believe it'd be you.
So, there was a, there was a conversation last board meeting about Waterloo students and utilizing the bus. And so I just have a follow-up to that on, were Waterloo students treated as school of choice as an aggregate, or only those that didn't like the choice they were given? Am I asking that?
That's a good question.
Because someone else said to me, look, if my children are in school of choice, and they're in school of choice, are we getting the same treatment as school of choice? Because they really didn't have a choice. And so I couldn't answer the question, so I'm posing it here.
I know of no Waterloo student who submitted a school of choice request that wasn't honored.
So when the students were assigned to either Custer or Arborwood, were they categorized as Arborwood students and Custer students? Or were they categorized as students of choice, as indicated by the system putting them there? Because the school chose for them to be put in those two schools. So school of choice, does it come from the parent? Did the system itself choose for them? And that was, I think it made sense, like when someone asked me.
So we placed students based on where they lived, at Arborwood or Custer. And then if the family had a different request for their student, they could then submit the school of choice paperwork.
So they are enrolled as Arborwood students, and they are enrolled as Custer students, not school of choice students?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, oh, and this came up, because we did a tour, and the question came up afterwards. I was thinking about it. And how many classrooms, and I don't think anybody's going to answer this now, which is fine. My question is, like, since enrollment, how many classrooms are in each school? Like, how many classrooms are there at each school? Because we know that the enrollment of the district was like 2,000 more than it was, like, less than 10 years ago. And so there are existing classrooms at each building. And so if we could get some data on that, that would be helpful.
That is part of our presentation in regards to the elementaries.
Okay, thanks.
I think you can get some maps, too, I don't know if you want to bring those, let me do a presentation.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Larry.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Mary.
The what?
We had maps, actually.
Oh, okay, yeah. I won't remember my tours, I finally got to tour every building, yay. So I was going through some staffing in preparation for some upcoming discussions, and I noticed that schools, and I'm looking at you, and I don't look left, because I can't look left very well, so I don't mean to discount you, Dave, two climate liaisons. And so I'm thinking, like, why does each school need two climate liaisons? And I'm kind of confused as, I'm looking at the teachers, and we were talking about how fulfilling their day is. I just can't understand that. There's some buildings on our chart that had two climate liaisons at the elementary school level. No, it was, I don't think so, but you may be right, but you are correct.
I think it says, I know Custer has two, is that because of one and two?
And Arborwood has two.
The buildings and the number of students, it helps that that person can monitor the attendance and do what they do as a possible liaison. So two, two building complexes at two.
I'm going to refer to you rather than pull out my notes, thank you very much.
And in addition, as another caveat to that, buildings like Custer, for example, and Waterloo last year as an example, also wrote extra hours for those positions into their Title I grant funds usage. So that also could be a potential reason there was maybe more of an allocation, because the principal felt that they wanted more hours or an additional part-time person, so they wrote.
So there may be more than two at a single building?
I don't.
I think Utah will have to work together on that one.
Yeah, most of the time it was extended hours.
I was just looking at the position itself, I wasn't looking at hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We really monitor that, because what's, I mean, we try to be fair and give everyone what they need, but you don't need two or three possible school climate liaisons in a building, like.
That was kind of what my question was.
Yeah, no, you don't need it for two buildings, but like Monroe, Custer, and Arborwood are two buildings.
Yeah, okay. Or maybe more. You two can work that out. Just get back to me, how's that?
I'm pretty sure the Waterloo one, where it was, they added hours, as Mrs. Flynn said.
That was it, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I went by Raisenville again at 3:30 today, and the petrol problem. And I understand, I don't know how to resolve, other than, I mean, we may have to just break down and enlarge that area that we park. I don't think there's any other way, I mean, they were on the road, I mean.
It is kind of dangerous. I'm sorry, I parked on the road one day, because I got there and I didn't know where to go. So I did do that one day, and I apologize for that, but I got there and I didn't know where to go. And it was literally my kids' pickup time, my grandkids.
A lot of people, right, just on the side of the road, because they couldn't get in.
Right.
Which, I mean, I understand that, and I understand the problem, if they would come in on time, but, I mean, it doesn't happen, and.
Have a side lot, so we have somewhere to go.
But, I mean, you know, so I mean, if we might. Second thing I has, that I know early this year, we approved first vehicle service, and we indicated that we are going to look at consolidating perhaps some other districts into ours. I didn't know what to process, how far we were on that, because I know we at one time indicated that this contract may be not renewed in October, so I didn't know what the process on that was. So I don't know there. And then the other thing I has, that when Mr. Oly was indicating about the project at the high school, I think we still have a trailer out there, don't we, that we're paying on, the construction trailer? I think we pay on that. They really don't need to be there, does it? And I don't know how much we pay per month, but, I mean, it seems like a.
I thought it was a permanent thing.
Are you referring to the Clark trailer? Are you referring to the Clark trailer? That's they, that's part of their cost. I'm sure it's somewhere in our billing line, but we don't direct pay for that, that's.
Figure that out for me, Cassie, and let me know on that.
I can see if they have the detail on that, on their billings.
Okay, see what that is, because I see them out there, and I'm thinking, why is there a trailer out there now, so, all right. They baked the cost into us.
Scott?
Yeah, just a quick comment, and it's really for everyone out there. I know sometimes that what we do is messy, but I just want everyone to know that I truly believe in everybody up here, that even while we disagree, everyone truly has their heart in the right place for what we do in education. I really appreciate that. Please just remember, everyone up here, we're people, don't vilify the folks that are up here. We have good people, and Andrew Shaw hits the golf ball a long way, that's all.
I take it you went golfing?
Come back in, Mary.
Yes, may I make a request for your consideration, my esteemed colleagues, that at our last board work session, we were discussing thinking about goal setting for certain things. I would like for your consideration to possibly have that as one of our working topics for a very soon board meeting, the sooner the better.
What, have what?
Goal setting for our superintendent, so we could discuss that.
I think that would be a good thing.
The sooner the better, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Tom, I haven't heard nothing from you.
A couple, I guess, kind of piggybacking on Lyria and Raisenville. I know we've had a couple of proposals for Custer for the route, and we had a little discussion when we did our tour. I guess, just, are we going to come up with a new proposal, it sounds like, or are we going to go with?
For Custer?
Yeah, or going with proposal two.
So Custer, so the Custer one is more the proposal number two, which brings us behind the soccer field.
Okay.
We actually talked with Kohler today. We're wanting to make sure that when we make, we start to look into that, we're also looking into any drainage and other issues that we could arise. So the Custer project's going to take just a little bit longer, we want to do some due diligence first. When it comes to Raisenville, we'll look at what we can do out there. We're back to, again, it's, can, Scott has a very well-oiled system out there. If parents would just follow the system, we wouldn't have a single car on the road. And they'd actually not even have to wait, I mean, I mean, show up at 3:40, you know, 10 minutes.
It's hard to time that out, though, I mean, it is, three or four minutes makes a difference in that line. And I catch two lights, I'm off by minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's difficult.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's just not working. Good, better, and different things.
We moved a bunch of cars off the road, but it's still.
It's, yeah, it's better than what, the kids are not crossing roads from the cars anyway.
Right.
That's good.
That's better.
I thought there was a discussion about moving the Custer possibility without having to deal with the drainage.
So not.
Isn't that what you understood?
Dealing with the culvert.
The culvert.
That's it, we're talking about totally separate item, so on our property, we have, oh geez, it's not drainage, it's basins.
Catch basins.
And so that's, we got to make sure that we don't do any damage there, so that's all.
To me, it means the same thing.
A little bit more research here.
So we're not looking at possibly moving it, we're just looking at working where it's at, okay?
One, one last thing, too, on our tour yesterday, talking to Tim, do we have any update, further update today on the pump and the bathroom situation at the football field?
Oh, good point.
They're currently looking at the pump right now, and it's getting reviewed. We're probably going to end up having to replace it, because that was in there for such a short amount of time.
I'm assuming it's under warranty of some type?
Okay.
I think everybody agrees it's sweet and adequate as far as size-wise, I mean, is there any way we could expand that, or are we kind of?
That's what, that's what we're looking at right now, because that, when it was first put in, it, there was, it was wired, so that was not running at full capacity, so they fixed that situation. Now, it's more of a, why did it happen? Was it a failure on the equipment, is it undersized? That's what we want to make sure of, and we're going to thoroughly test it before, before we get there.
If I recall, when we first got on the board, and there was some really intricate drawings of proposals to what could be done out in that area out there, the seating was prioritized. The concession area was also something that was part of the plan, but also included in that was the restroom expansion, because we had talked about the fact that there wasn't enough, I mean, how many, how many seats are there in each bathroom?
I think you got 10 in each one, if I read.
No.
Someone was just telling me at the game that there was only a couple.
Could be 10 total.
I haven't been in there.
Because we just went through there.
I don't.
Wasn't that part of that plan, Andy?
That was part of the bond work inside.
Well, but, bond work is restrooms, that's restrooms.
Not outside, though.
It was never, we didn't talk, we talked about making sure everything was ADA compliant, but as far as more into the bathrooms of adding on anything, there was never a conversation.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
The pump and all that has nothing to do with the adding on, it's more moving the stuff.
When the pumps went out at the game, it opened the conversation with many people at the stadium as to, well, while you're at it, why don't you?
There were reported Giants added out there, so.
All right, anyone else? Can I get an adjourn, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Support.
This meeting's adjourned, 8:30, 8:00 PM.